So tonight, it's a joint meeting, obviously, with the Free Town and Lakeville Board of Select Boards. So I think we'll all open my meeting and then go open yours. Perfect. Okay. So with the quorum being present, on Monday, November 3rd, 2025, at 6:00 PM, I'll call to order the Free Town Board of Select meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on our town's YouTube page. And that's it today, right? All right, so I'll kick it over to you.
At this time, I'd like to call the Lakeville Select Board to order on Monday, November 3rd, at 6:00 PM, here at the Free Town Police Station. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anybody else in the audience recording? Seeing none. We have a quorum this evening, minus our chair, who is out of town, so I'm filling in to run the meeting. So to my left, we have Chris Blanca, to my right, Paul Hunt, and Lorraine Carbone.
All right, great. I know you guys do the Pledge of Allegiance, so we kick it off with that.
Sure.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, so I guess we start off with agenda item one. So this is a status update on Akushnet students attending Ponacote Regional High School. So I'm not sure where we want to start with that conversation and where we stand. We'll just kind of open up the discussion.
Well, I was hoping, oh, you can see our superintendent has arrived. Our board has not had any discussion about this. I know that, you know, I do pay attention to the school committee meetings, so I knew that this was coming up for discussion a while ago. I wasn't sure what the status was, or even what the impact would be, you know, for the select board. So it's not been on one of our agendas.
Same, same with us. So yeah, I don't know if the superintendent wants to speak to where we, you know, stand on this, or how many students, or any kind of, what the expectation is.
I'm happy to speak, Mike.
Thank you.
So thank you for calling on me. As you know, we are talking to Akushnet about potentially entering some type of tuition agreement, where students who are in Akushnet in eighth grade looking for a high school would be able to attend school at a Ponacote Regional High School. We, we're not really allowed to share too many details around it because we are competing for the opportunity to enter a tuition agreement with them. I can tell you that on August 20th, we made a presentation, which is public, to the folks of Akushnet regarding what we have to offer at Ponacote. And like I said, that presentation is public. You can go take a look at it. We met all of their criteria, so they sent us a list of things they wanted to hear about. Subsequent to that, they did offer an opportunity for a representative from each of the four schools to meet with the central office staff in Akushnet and talk about a potential agreement. So we took advantage of that. Myself, John Higgins, and Chair Blum went to that meeting, had a conversation with them, got a little bit more information about what they would be looking for in a tuition agreement, and then came back to the district and drafted some options for Akushnet should they invite us back to the table again. Then we received an invitation from Akushnet to see, they wanted to come and take a look at Ponacote, as they are visiting the other three schools that are in contention as well. So we welcomed a team of visitors, which included two or three of their school committee members and their central office staff back on October 23rd. They had a great day, if I might say so myself, at Ponacote. And then the rest of their team, the rest of their school committee members, and the remaining central office staff will be back to visit the school on November 10th. And then subsequent to that, I believe, the Akushnet School Committee will be taking a look at some of the proposals they've received and rendering some type of decision, or inviting representatives from the school committee and perhaps myself back to the table to talk about the agreement. Annually, Akushnet has about 100 eighth grade students, and they're, they're looking for a high school placement outside of the students that would be going to O'Colony and any of the students that would be going to Bristol Aggie. So they are entertaining Frey Haven High School, New Bedford High School, which they're currently in agreements with right now, O' Rochester, and us. We are looking to be a single-source provider, so if Akushnet is looking for, we'll say, a menu of options outside of O'Colony and outside of Bristol Aggie, we're no longer interested. We're looking to be the sole-source provider for what we believe could be between 40 and 50, if not more, students coming from Akushnet annually.
Great. Thank you very much. And do we think that, say, you know, max 50 students, do you see any kind of concerns with that, with our current resource, like staffing levels, or?
If that, when we take in 40 or 50 students, we would be looking to hire additional staff, especially if you're doing that over a period of time, right? So if you're taking in 40 students over four years, that's 160 students. So we would be looking to restore some of the positions that have recently been cut. And, and we had made that pretty clear to our school committee, or not pretty clear, to our school committee when we were walking through numbers for a tuition agreement. So we built in anticipated additions in terms of staffing.
Great. And then just like classrooms, the number of classrooms, there's no concern there? We can definitely, like, you know, handle that.
We have room at the facility.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
All right, that's my question. I'm not sure if anyone else has any other questions.
I just had a quick question. So you're looking for the FY '27 school year, is that correct?
It actually is next school year, for next September. That's what Akushnet is looking for.
Okay.
All right. They're on a pretty quick timeline.
So their decision, I would think, because we're entering, you know, the budget cycle, and I'm, I'm sure you have a lot to prepare for that, should the decision come our way, grant you enough time to be able to build that in?
It would.
Okay.
It would. We are, when we had our last conversation with Akushnet, they were thinking they'd have a decision by December. I can't control their timeline. And I do know, like I said, their second visit to us is November 10th. I'm not aware of their visit schedule to other buildings.
And what, that makes sense. And what would also just be eighth grades coming in, then they filter through the years, or would we take transfers from New Bedford High or from other schools?
That would be part of an agreement that we would make with Akushnet, but I believe in Akushnet's, I believe Akushnet's intent is to allow the students to complete where they are. So this would be effective.
That makes sense.
My question is, how, how does the tuition agreement work? Is it similar to school choice? Or how, how does the districts, Lakeville and Free Town, get reimbursed for having 50 to 60 students, 160 students over four years? How's it work? Like, what's your idea of that?
It would be written into the agreement. So I can't speak to you about dollar values right now, but we could set up a payment structure where they're, where they're paying us two to three times a year, which is similar to what they're doing with Frey Haven and New Bedford.
When you say agreement, you mean the regional agreement between both towns, or a new agreement?
No, I mean, this is a tuition agreement that would occur between Free Town, Lakeville Regional School District, and Akushnet Public Schools. It's not an agreement such that you have right now between your two towns. So in other words, we would not become Free Town, Lakeville, and Akushnet. This is Free Town, Lakeville Regional School District welcoming the students of Akushnet in through a tuition agreement to take seats. So yes, Carlos, in some ways, it's like school choice.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how it all works at the end, right? So what I don't want to enter in is an agreement that, let's say, both towns would have to go in town meeting and vote on it to include them. And then, let's say, Akushnet says yes, and then town meeting goes wrong, or, or goes no, as far as voting, feel bad for the Akushnet kids.
Sure thing. So my understanding is the tuition agreement is the purview of the school committee, and not the towns, and that the agreement will be made with the school committee.
That's what, that was going to be my next question, so that makes sense.
Okay.
And again, emphasize, it's a negotiation, and this is very early. We, we have had the opportunity to showcase the great work of a Ponacote Regional High School, and, and we, we are hoping that people of Akushnet pick us. Another thing to your point, Carlos, while I have the floor, we are looking for a short-term agreement. The, the current agreements that Akushnet are, are in with New Bedford and Frey Haven have been lengthy. And one thing that they had expressed to us is that they were looking for a shorter-term agreement. So we're hoping to reach something that would be, you know, short-term, so that we can all come back to the table and make sure this is working for both sides.
Mr. Chair, a question for Dr. Stocky. Do you anticipate this agreement would be a revenue generator, a break-even, or how, what's the impact, the overall impacts to the budget, hiring additional, factoring in hiring back additional teachers?
So again, in global terms, we're looking for it to be a revenue stream for the district.
Okay. Thank you.
That's interesting.
I, trust me, I, one of the things I shared this week when I met with, last week when I met with Deb Petty and Andy Sukforth was, we would certainly like to be able to share numbers and be more transparent, because when people have questions, that's how rumors get started, right? That's how misinformation spins.
Yeah.
But we're in a negotiation. We can't talk numbers publicly, but as soon as we can. Happy to do so. I had mentioned to Chair Blum, we'd be happy to have an informational night for anybody who would like to come and know more about it, you know, if we get to that point in the conversation.
Mr. Chair, follow-up question, if I may. Would you, and I understand you can't discuss specifics cost at this stage of the negotiations, would you enter the agreement knowing that it would be a, would result in a cost impact, in a loss of revenue?
No.
Okay.
No. I, I speak for myself. I'm not the one who would sign the agreement. The school committee would, but I certainly wouldn't be bringing forward something that intentionally would be a cost to the district.
Okay.
In our initial conversation with Akushnet, we've set a, a student expectation number that we would need, and an opportunity, we, again, have not been invited to negotiate, but part of an agreement can be an additional assessment to the tuition to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, are we, I mean, on the same kind of related, are we expecting to lose more kids to BP with that brand-new facility being built? Once that, which I think this, I'm thinking about that, this could kind of make up for some of those.
Trevor, if I had a crystal ball, I'd love to be able to, you know, to predict those numbers. But as we've all come to understand, enrollment and getting students into your schools, no matter where you are, it's, it's very competitive.
Yeah.
Right? So Bristol Plymouth does have a nice facility. There's potential for O'Colony to have a brand-new facility. Bristol Aggie has a brand-new facility. So we are certainly looking to get students to get our enrollment back up at Ponacote. We'd like to be able to maintain, restore and maintain some of the programming that we've seen diminish over time.
Yep, that makes sense. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, I think, ready to move on to agenda item two? This is a discussion on recall provision procedures for school committee members. We have a copy of the warrant in the packet. I have one question, just for off the path on this one. I read this, I was, I think I'm actually misinterpreting it, but, so I see the 150 registered voters, correct? And then, lower, and this is me probably just not understanding the nuances of this kind of, of this language, but it says that there needs to be, the petition shall be signed by at least 10% of the registered voters for each precinct of each member town in the regional school district.
Correct.
So, like, what are, like, so it's the larger of those, like, that's going to be a lot bigger than 150, I'm assuming, correct?
That's my understanding.
Especially, we only, we have three districts in Free Town, which, I don't know, I should know this, but I'm not sure what the population breakdown is.
I think it's about $2,000 a precinct, 2,000 people, precincts.
You got your mind stuck on numbers.
I know.
Dollars, though.
That just seems like a very high burden, potentially. But I don't know, if you have any thoughts on this? Not sure.
Well, I do know that it would require 150, 150 registered voters to bring the recall petition to the table. But I think, you know, based on what you were just indicating, would be the percentage to support or not support the petition on town floor for the recall.
Okay.
This, and I, I had nothing to do with this, I just know from past, you know, we had all talked about this initially in our first meeting, and council was the one who had to kind of draw this, right? Because it has to mirror the image, the, the language has to mirror for you and I, right?
Correct.
I say, you and I, Free Town, Lakeville. So that was really what happened with this getting drawn up, is the way it was, and this is the language. I don't, I'm not a, not an attorney, and I, but I know that this was the language that they gave that was supposed to be Lakeville and Free Town wanting the same, exactly the same. And we both needed to have this approved.
And I think after our, you know, our previous joint meeting that we had, we had all agreed and had consensus to direct our town administrators to work with town council, because we had the benefit of utilizing the same town council.
Yep.
So I would put this to our town administrators to see, you know, what they have to say with regards to the drafting of the document that we have in front of us this evening.
Yeah, so I, as, as much as this kind of seems straightforward, I don't think there's many regional school committees that have done a recall. I think maybe, this is probably going to be the second in like, what, 30 years? This is mostly drafted after Athol Royalston, which is out in Western Mass. So they took a lot of that language and put it in here. There was a lot of questions that came in, I think, the last, like, day before our warrant review. So I played it safe and just took it off instead of passing kind of a bad piece of legislation. And just tried to play it safe and then keep discussion going, and then come back and approve it at a later town meeting. So.
Any questions?
Yeah. And we have worked together with town council. This, we have the mirror language each town, because they need to have the mirror language. Some of the questions were a lot about how to certify what signatures, when you have to have them certify both, both towns. So do they have to go to Lakeville first, and then Free Town, and there's only a five-day window to get those signatures certified? So there's a question about, do we change those number of days? There's also a question about, it's technically, it's written that the secretary of the school committee would get the affidavits and petitions, and the secretary of the school committee could be the, be the person that's being recalled, and, and that would be sort of a conflict of interest in what we do with that. It was suggested that the superintendent of schools, where they, they really have no role in this process, but that they would handle the affidavits. So those are the questions that are sort of up in the air at the moment, that we have to, to work out the details and do, it almost sounds like town council was like, it's, it's fine, you can just make an agreement to do something different than what's, right, you know what I mean? But I think it's in the towns, both towns' best interest that we clarify this language and get it correct, because if in fact you need it, you want it to say what you need it to say. So, you know, we'll continue to work on it.
So then we should probably make sure that, like, we're, we're voting this in the same, at least, town meeting cycle, right? We should probably pull it off ours until we get this stuff nailed down, which, once again, is kind of, and these are Cheryl's, our town clerk's notes, right? She, she had.
She's been back and forth, yeah, she, she made some comments, and then I, I read town council's response. So very legitimate concerns, I think, on some of them.
Yeah, and I'd like to get clarification on that, on that 10% kind of language, too, just so that that makes sense, so we can, we can figure that out. All right, yeah, so I, I think we're, we're getting closer, or we're not there yet, right?
And I would think, you know, our town clerk would, you know, if she hasn't already, you know, through Andrew, you know, weighed in, because obviously, this is going to be an impact, you know, on their operation.
Mm-hmm, for sure.
You know, as this comes in. So I want to make sure that the clarity, you know, is there as well. And as you had mentioned, Deb, that, you know, anytime something questionable comes up in the future, you would like to be able to go back to a hardened fact document. And we'd like to make sure that we understand it as well, before we go forward. So when, when do you typically have your annual town meeting?
First, Monday in May, first Monday in June, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we're right around the same time?
We usually are back to.
Okay, so maybe that would be a really good, you know, benchmark for us to try to aim for?
That makes sense. Perfect.
And then I will talk to our Chair Maureen about maybe putting this on a select board agenda. Maybe we have some questions, you know, after we dive into it as well, and then make sure we flush that out through our town administrators, through town council.
Sounds great. All right, any other questions on the recall provision, before we move on to another agenda item? Okay, agenda item three. This is a discussion on MBTA community status. We are not currently compliant for the MBTA community status. And so we have seen, I mean, I'll let Deb probably explain a little more, but we have seen, you know, grants being either clawed back or taken away. It's a lot of unknowns right now, to be honest with you. But it's, you know, from what, everything we've told, like, there, there's going to be kind of action by the state based on our, you know, lack of compliance.
Yeah, I mean, we're currently working on a revision to try to meet compliance. We're working with Bowler, an outside firm that's a consultant helping us. We're going to bring it back before a town meeting in January, which is why our town meeting sort of got pushed, so that we have time to prepare the zoning districts and bring it back before the town. I think that we've already been contacted by the states, asking us if we're bringing this back before town meeting. So they're already looking at whether we're going to be, whether we're trying to be in compliance or not. So I'm hoping that, they said they're going to leave us alone until January. I'm hoping the fact that we're having a town meeting January 26th, that really they don't do anything prior to that town meeting and give us one more bite at the apple. So I'm, I'm optimistic that we're going to pass a district, a zoning district, in January, but I have no way of knowing, as you know, town meeting, people can vote their will at that meeting, so we won't know.
And it's a two-thirds vote? Is that what it means to you?
This, the zoning that they're putting forth will be a majority vote.
Majority?
50%, yeah.
50%, okay.
So, because it doesn't include any amendments to existing zoning. Originally, we were, we were trying to amend the PMUD, which include a business district, and that create, that, that created the two-thirds necessary to change the zoning district. But there is a special provision that allows, when you're doing the MBTA community status, to, to do a majority vote. So we'll see.
They gave us till the end of, sorry, Trevor, they gave us through the end of the calendar year initially, to, to come up with something, right?
End of this year.
Of this year. But we pushed it off to January to make sure that what we brought before the town meets sense.
Right.
So that's what they're talking about with that. So we don't know if they're going to say something as of January 1, come in, you know.
Well, I would think that as long as you were in communication with them to let them know, and you had the warrant article, and it was going to be on town meeting, you'd already started the process.
Yeah.
I think we're going to be okay.
Yeah.
Well, any other questions or concerns on, on this topic? All right. Great. And then, agenda item four, this is a discussion on fiscal 2027 prelim budget, which we have not really started much yet.
No.
I don't know if you guys want to talk about where you stand? You're further ahead than us.
Yeah, I did a projection with myself and the finance director back in, I think it was August 5th that we gave it. It's like most towns right now, big deficit, over half million. So my idea was to probably start the capital budget early. Those requests were due about a month ago. We're going to go through, I think, within the next month and finalize our capital plan. We've been kind of a buffer with the free cash number. But obviously, it's fiscal '27 is going to be concerning across the board, I think, probably with Free Town as well. So I don't know if we can work together somehow, but it's going to be a lot tougher than the last couple of years.
What do you see as like the biggest driver?
Healthcare is a big one. Last year, we faced about a 10% increase. We're switching health groups, so we might, we've been told to prepare for 15% to 20%. Education costs across the board are going up. We're doing collective bargaining for all our groups, which are four of them. Pension costs, it's like every town.
Yeah.
Fixed costs, cost of labor is going up. There's a talent shortage across the board, so.
But there's no, like, big loss of any kind of revenue driver, any, like, you know, big company that was, you know, that's part of your tax base there?
No, I don't think, we don't really have a stop and shop like, like you guys do.
It's top of mind for us, right, because we, you know.
So we have a lot of big economic development potentials, but they're all kind of residential housing. But those are years away. Even if they were built today, I don't think we'd see the revenue for three or four years, unfortunately. So if the cavalry's coming, it's not new growth. State aid obviously is going down, but, you know, it's a bleak picture, obviously, so.
Yeah, I understand. I don't know, Deb, can you speak to, like, do you have a list?
I mean, obviously, I prepare the budget every year. I have an idea, you know, what I've been saying for the last few years, that joining BP, while I think a good thing for our students, is difficult for our budget and our predictions, because we're still not at full capacity with the school. However, this year, we have 96 students attending the school. And just looking at that number, I'm predicting that the cost to send our students to BP is around $2 million. Now, mind you, you know, three years ago, we were probably only spending $500,000 or $600,000 and getting $500,000 back for Chapter 70 money for out-of-district children going to a school out of district. So not only are we paying $2 million to send our children to BP, but we've lost that half a million-dollar credit. So it's really like a $2.5 million budget hit. And we have a couple of other concerning things that I think are going to put some strains on our budget this year. Although I anticipated it, there's, you know, I've had a couple of things that come up that I didn't anticipate, that are really going to strain our budget. So I need to know what new growth is, and I think that's the number for us that gives me what we'll have to, to spend in addition to, say, last year's budget. So $500,000 or $600,000, and, you know, everybody, everything's just increased. We did get our retirees insurance increased. You guys know, in the last meeting, it was 14% to 17%, or maybe that's on tonight's meeting, 14% to 17% increase in the health insurance. And that's on the piggyback of last year, being 10%. So we are facing the same things as Lakeville. I, I say that sometimes. We just swap back and forth, so we've been, it's been a little bit easier for Free Town the last few years, but we're headed all in the same direction. And not only Free Town and Lakeville, I read articles all the time about all the other towns struggling. But there is some, I think, some interesting talks coming up about Chapter 70 monies and whatnot, and I'd encourage people to start looking at that and get involved with that, because that's really where the towns can benefit. If we can get more Chapter 70 money from the state to help support our school systems, that will alleviate some of the, the pressure on the towns in terms of financial, and not only that, maybe get some more money to the school districts to do some of the capital improvements that they need to do. So that's coming up. I want to say it's November 19th, that Ponacote High School is hosting the talk. Yeah. So I'd like to put the plug in for that. I think it's 4:30 to 6:30. I'm, I'm looking at Dr. Stocky, she, she's well aware. I think the more that can turn out for that meeting, and really pressure or let the state know that we really need their help with this Chapter 70 money for our school districts and our children, that the more that we can get for the school, the better off we'll all be as a town, because we also have competing needs in addition to the school. We have our seniors, and we have, you know, other competing needs for vulnerable populations that we need to make sure we take care of as well. So, yeah, I, I'll know more January, what our budget looks like, but I'm concerned.
Okay. Yeah. All right, any other questions or concerns on that?
No.
Okay. So move on to agenda item five, which is a discussion on joint regional active shooters trainings. And I think W. requested this one on, and we have the chiefs here to speak to this.
Yeah. Good evening. So the, the, obviously, we have a lot of discussions about active shooter training with the school system. And as we know, it's, it's expensive to do. The towns pay overtime to all the staff, and it's both police and fire attend. And there's a lot that goes into it, a lot of planning, and, and the chiefs can speak more to that. But I, I was thinking, you know, it's very beneficial for all towns to have the active shooter training. And we all hope to God we never need it for any of our school districts. But if there were ever to be an active shooter incident, we know that all towns mutual aid is coming, right? It's not just going to be Lakeville, at the Lakeville School, or Free Town, at the Free Town School. Lakeville's coming, Free Town's coming, Rochester's coming, Berkeley's coming, they're all coming, as we would for their schools, right? All of the mutual aids. So my thought process on this was, I'd like to request funding from the district, from the senator, from the representatives, to fund regional active shooter training, whether it be annually or biannually for our schools, and the schools could rotate, but that all mutual aid towns work together, and the chiefs would be imperative in trying to determine what towns would make sense, or, or maybe the representatives. But that way, we can get the training at least every, every year, or every other year. We involve more than just our two, two towns, because I think if it ever did happen, it would be more than two towns coming to the, to the plate and, and, you know, dealing with the situation. So the, the more training we have, the better we'll be able to respond if there ever is some kind of an incident. So
So that was what this, I wanted to present and make sure that, that was okay. I have not talked into representatives, I have not asked them, I'm glad the chiefs are both here to speak to that, if, if, uh, you know, if, if they will, and what their thoughts are on that approach.
Follow, following up from the previous agenda item where it's a bleak outlook on FY twenty-seven, I think this is something that is important, it should be done annually. Police officers all across Massachusetts, um, are faced with this, and I, it, it should be training that's done by every town, every community, every police department and fire department. And those, uh, local, regional school systems like Free Town and Lakeville, uh, should train together. Unfortunately, the cost of overtime, the cost of planning, um, it can get expensive. And any way we can be creative to find the money to fund this annually, um, would be good. And it's something that, uh, the MPTC has thought about, but it's, it has yet to be mandated. And that's something that I think should be, uh, a mandate as part of the annual recertification for every police officer across the state.
I'm gonna, um, piggyback off what the, the chief mentioned, that I think all chiefs, this is the chief's worst nightmare, thinking that an active shooter incident could happen in their community. And when you look at the news and you look at where these events happen, it happens in a community just like ours. And for us to, uh, sit back and think that it's not gonna happen to our community, that's the pitfall. We need to be prepared, and how to do that is by doing the training. It takes time and money, I think, uh, agencies across the area have been very creative in themselves. But the real training for mutual aid needs to be in a joint effort. We need to work alongside, by side with our neighboring agencies, knowing that we have their back and knowing that they have our back as well. So again, uh, just look to support that as we go forward, because we know that the, you know, regional school system is basically in the middle of our joint area. And, um, there's a good chance that Free Town could be there potentially quicker than Lakeville. Um, and vice versa, depending on what's going on for activity for our departments. We need to be prepared and we need to, uh, put the training to the exercise for our personnel out there.
Great, so it sounds like if we can get the money, then you guys will do it, so perfect.
If it's the money, we will do it.
I, I know after our last meeting, um, you know, the topic was, was discussed, and, you know, I appreciate you taking the time to, to share with us what you have been doing up to this point, too. I think we all at the table agreed that it was a priority, and I, you know, for Lakeville, you know, we wanted to see that, you know, built into the buzz, budget annually, so that it didn't burden, you know, our police department just solely, you know, for the budget purpose. So, um, I can't speak for the rest of the board. I don't think that the board would, you know, have an issue if we were to look for, um, outside support for, you know, a, a regional effort. So, um, I for one would, would help support that, that effort.
Absolutely, and just for ballpark, do, do we have any idea of like, for every training, how much it would cost, you know, like, just, just out of curiosity?
I think we ballparked this yesterday, for each, uh, police, um, of the police departments, speaking for just myself, you're probably looking at, to have the certain offices who are gonna be taking part in the training and the planning. And it's a mul- multi-day thing to mandate this, um, probably around ten thousand. Ten thousand per just the police department, now the fire department, that would be, you know, Lakeville Fire would be another ten thousand.
Yeah, we budget twenty thousand, that's what we budget for, for police and fire.
Okay.
That's correct.
That makes sense.
And I'm sure you wrote that.
Yeah, we have the budget flexibility, um, we've had a few budget savings, I think we can do that for twenty-six within the operating. Obviously, the easiest thing to do is a free cash article, gives us flexibility over multiple years, that'd probably be the, the best way to do it.
And I think because of the sensitivity of the topic, um, you know, to not share as to, you know, if it's this year or next year, you know, we just.
Or every year.
You would take, obviously, the, the directive to make it happen and.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've done it and scraped things together and pulled from different, you know, different line items and stuff to get, to get this done, so.
And I guess it would be up to us to make sure that the money was there.
Yeah, to pull from you from the last time, that's kind of what we both had all agreed on, was that we would just find a way to build it into the budget, but let's face it, there's no better place than to say, hey, we're getting the money from the reps or whoever, and I don't think many reps would give too hard of a pushback if they have the money available to help feed, you know, this initiative. So, um, I love the idea to, to get the money from an outside source and to allow these gentlemen to do what they do.
And there's always the possibility that there could be a bill up on, on the hill already, um, because, you know, the thousands of bills that they have that they're weaning through could be, could be something up there, too, so conversation with our reps would be
Yeah.
very beneficial, I would think.
Yep, perfect.
So, can, um, so is that an, an action for, for Andrew to research congressional support?
Yeah.
Grants and so forth?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I would say that maybe Andrew and Deb working together, and then obviously, the other issue is, is it was just brought up, and if, you know, they, if these chiefs think that it needs to be anyone other than Free Town and Lakeville involved is what that means, and that's, that's their gig, not mine. But I'm just talking out loud based on the conversation that just occurred, so.
We'll figure it out, see what's available, what, what, what the reps, which direction, I was actually thinking of that, maybe we go wait, you know, get a bill and get, get away from the state funding, too. So we'll figure that out.
All right. Any question on this, ready before? All right, great, so agenda item six now is, uh, discussion on the MBTA quiet, uh, train quiet zones. So we have, what, eleven crossings in Free Town?
Correct.
Me, too.
Which was a shocking number to hear the first time, but now I'm like paying attention, oh yeah, there's one over there. And we have, none, none of them are designated as, as quiet zones currently. Based on the information I saw in the packet, it's, the cost can be between thirty thousand dollars and a million dollars, which is a huge range of, to, to implement the, the quiet zone. So I guess my first question is, do, do you guys, does Lakeville have designated quiet zones? No. Is it a big problem for you guys?
We have residents that have some serious concern, we have three crossings. Even before, uh, the South Coast Rail was coming through, we were having discussions of what it would entail for a quiet zone, and we knew back then it was, yeah, about a million dollars a crossing. So this board has, um, you know, directed our town administrator to look into it, and I know that jointly, um, they've dived into this and, and realized that it's a little bigger than just Lakeville becoming a quiet zone, or just Free Town coming, or Berkeley. So it, it looks like it would be a combined effort, and Andrew, I know you've updated us briefly, but if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, so everything I've learned, because we, basically the state funded a di- not, diagnostic report, we haven't gotten that yet, but we did receive feedback from it. We have three crossings, North Precinct, Leonard and Malbone, uh, we were kind of told that North Precinct and Leonard would be, be in the million dollar range. It sounds like the third one, Malbone, would be like the thirty thousand one, um, it's a very wide street, they can put a median down the middle of it. So it's just a couple raised concrete type of deal, which wouldn't be a, a necessarily a burden on us to do, but the, the, the fact is, the Berkeley's crossings are right there. Um, and if they don't do theirs, then it doesn't matter if we do ours, so, um, fortunately for a small town, Free Town, Berkeley and Lakeville, we don't have the, really the fiscal resources to handle it, that kind of increase, without significant, um, state or federal funding. I haven't really gotten any word on state funding for that, but they kind of point us to the feds every time.
Yeah, same with us. It's tough one, because there's so many tracks, right, your Malbone is our Beechwood, right, and then Berkeley's right there. And they, that, that noise does travel quite a bit, right? So thirty to a million dollars is what we're looking at as well. We're looking for, we're waiting for our report as well, we've gotten some information back, but the diagnosis has been done, we'll see what they say and take it from there. But it is, but you're right, it is a joint effort between all our towns, right? I, I will applaud the select board from all three towns that I've worked with, Lakeville and Berkeley, of, of course, Free Town. It's, it's one of those issues, the residents are not happy, and I don't blame them. So whatever we can do to make them a bit happier, one noise at a time, that's what we'll do.
I know that we are scheduling a meeting, I, I don't know. Yeah, that's our December seventeenth, um, I'm gonna host a meeting to, uh, any, anybody from the surrounding towns, mostly Free Town residents, obviously, to discuss the continuing complaints on the, on the rail. There was, there's just been a lot of disconnect with the MBTA and Keolis and South Coast Rail and NACOT, and there's so many players in the federal rail. I know some homeowners have been, um, in contact with certain play, people, and they, um, promised different noise mitigation things that they did not get. So I'm trying to address that directly to the residents by having an informational session. And try, I'm gonna try to get representatives, um, here to hear the complaints, to hear what I hear, um, on a daily basis, and try to, hopefully, we can work with these residents and individuals and come up with some solution that maybe makes it a little more palatable for them. If it's not a quiet zone, maybe it's that we put bushes along the tracks, if that helps. I don't know the solutions at this point, um, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit down with the residents and see what I can do and if I can bring in some of the, um, representatives from those, uh, different organizations to see if they can help too on a different level. If we can't make the, the zones to the eleven million dollar price tag quiet, is there something we can do to help the residents differently? I don't foresee us being able to fund the quiet zoning and, and, um, we, you can't have the last one in your town and the first one in your town be quiet, isn't that right, Andrew? So like, that's where, where it becomes the crossing, the town lines changes what you can do. So there's a lot to it, but we are working on it, the diagnostic report is being done and we're waiting for it. So until we get that and we have the actual cost, we're sort of in limbo, but December seventeenth, we'll have a meeting in this room. This room, right? To, to, if anybody wants to come and, you know, talk about their issues with the train, I'm certainly gonna listen and do my best to get them help somewhere.
Just a quick note on that, even if we spent the eleven million dollars, for those keeping track at home, let's say we, we put a town meeting and we do spend eleven million dollars, which like Deb said, I, that's a hard number, right, that's a lot of money. The state was still, the state and federal will still commit to certify that, right? So there's a, there's a scenario that we install, let's say eleven million dollars worth of quiet zones, and then, and the state comes in and says, too bad, we're still gonna blow the horn for safety reasons, and then the conductor has the ultimate say. So even if we have all these things, all these ducks in a row, boxes checked, the conductor can still play their musical horns at night, which is frustrating. So we're, we're taking it seriously, but it does take time for, so those are, that's for our residents.
I do remember when we had the meeting initially, we were told that there was one town that had quiet zones and they also lost them because of the amount of paperwork and everything that needed to be done behind the scenes, and they didn't do something and they lost it. It was like they never did it, and, and don't quote me on what it was, but it was, uh, someone up on the south shore that had done it, and they still, they didn't even get to keep it because they didn't keep up with all the checks and balances that caused. So it's not just put it in and, you know, wash our hands of it, it's, it seems like, based on what we were told initially, was there would be a lot of stuff behind the scenes afterwards, that what can you fall through and checks and balances?
Yeah, you have to be recertified every three years, I believe, you have to do traffic studies, um, so it's, it's an ongoing expense to the town. I don't know what that looks like, but yeah, it's, so like every three years you have to be recertified and you could lose it if you don't do what they want you to do.
Yeah.
And I think that, um, the concern here, it, maybe it isn't the quiet zone, but it is the mitigation that we can provide. So I know we had a list of residents that were directly impacted, and I wanna say that it was nineteen residents that would be eligible for mitigation, I don't know what your numbers were, I mean, with eleven crossing, I really didn't know until tonight that it was eleven, but, you know, maybe that net of mitigation is thrown out a little bit wider, um, so to speak, and, you know, find ways. I mean, we, we're not the first community with the train coming through, I'm sure we won't be the last, but, you know, whatever other communities have worked through their mitigation, I think that, you know, there's gotta be a way to help, you know, reduce some of the, the impact.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a, it's a tough one, because I remember our residents being frustrated with the, the process, right? For instance, let's say you live on the tracks or nearby the track, the, the mitigation would be, we'll update your windows facing the track. So if you have thirty windows in your household, five facing the track, the five will be replaced, the twenty-five is up to you to, to fix your, on your own. So it, I know they were frustrated, we, we had some small areas where we were able to improve them by going back to the state, help out, based on our last meeting we had. But that was very few, so it, it's a uphill battle, but one that we're willing to take, um, I'm sure we have information to provide you if you need some.
Great. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or concerns on this topic? All right. So, moving on to agenda item seven, this is, uh, the regional school agreement. In our last meeting, there was talks of updating some of this agreement. I don't know where we stand. Deb, where do we stand?
I, I don't think there's been any discussion since that last meeting about the, the regional school, uh, agreement, so I'm not sure.
If there is to be a discussion, um, maybe, um, through the town administrators, we schedule a joint meeting with the regional school committee, town of Free, um, Free Town, town of Lakeville, um, to talk about if there are items in there that we might wanna talk about, possibly addressing, because I, I believe it has to be the joint, you know, three committees, um, to bring that, you know, to discussion, so.
Which makes sense.
Right.
We'd want every, every possible person that it affects, right, and board or committee involved in that conversation, in my eyes, so, yeah. Kind of goes all saying, but it's worth saying.
So even if, even if we did have a, a get-together, and then we sat there and there was nothing, at least we did it, we went through the exercise.
Yeah.
Right.
It hasn't been updated, what, since, is it twenty-ten?
Twenty-ten, I think, I think your name's on it, uh, from twenty-ten.
Yeah.
My name was on the original one, too.
No, I agree.
Don't ask me what the, the original was. Can't always recall all of it, but.
Okay.
A lot of work went into it, so, I mean, it was, you know, we sat in the, the library back room, I think, Barbara, you might have been around at that time, too, I think. We're all sat, like, siding's in that room trying to hammer it out, so.
I can imagine, yeah. Yeah, so I think that's probably next step, right, if, if there is anything that even one of those parties wants to change, then we should, we, you know, I think we're all more than happy to, to, to schedule something joint down the road and, and figure that out. That makes sense, Deb?
Maybe, I know we're getting into the budget cycle, so we'll, you know, we'll just kind of throw some time, timeframes out, but, you know, I would say before the end of the fiscal FY twenty-six, maybe we have a joint meeting.
That makes sense. All right, great, any other questions or concerns on this one? Okay. So, agenda, item eight, discussion on athletic opportunities and related participant, participant fees.
If you don't want, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll jump in there. All right, uh, well, this one's, first, let me preface by saying, I am a coach and I've been running T-ball for the league for seven, eight years. It's a competitive sport, I enjoy, encourage everybody to join T-ball, which then turns into baseball. So what, so, yeah, I, I believe you all have received a letter from the baseball boards, all right? And what they're saying is, from, their understanding is, they're working with the Parks Commission from the town of Lakeville. And the Parks Commission has, you know, signaled to them that the, some fees per, per participant is gonna increase over the next year, a couple of years. That's where I'm foggy on, and you do you as a town, I'm, I'm not here to structure your, your, the way you do things at any, any given way. But my concerns for, as a coach, being on those fields is, some of the fields aren't playable. They're, they're there, but they're, like, baseball field's a little different than, let's say, a soccer field. Soccer field grass grows, you cut it, you paint the lines down, call it a day. Baseball fields, you add dirt, that dirt has to be removed at some point, right? Uh, what's happened over the years, I'll take Field Two and Three, which is across from the beautiful new park you guys just put there, looks great, by the way, right? And you look at those fields, you can have a center fielder, little kid, waiting for the ball, and there's about a two-foot lip from the second base down to the outfield. And that's a simple reason, is over the years. And that's a simple reason, is over the years, dirt's been added, let's say there's low spots, you, you use a thing called game saver, add that game saver onto the wet spot so you can play immediately during that day. What people don't realize about game saver is, after a couple of days, it needs to be removed, right? 'Cause it doesn't, it doesn't mix well with the clay and dirt that's there already. Well, over the years, that hasn't occurred, right? And so now it's uneven. You can bump from the baseline all the way down to the, the, the first baseline, from home plate to first base, a simple bunt, and the children aren't, they're not reactive to certain things, and, but the way the conditions are, those fields are, they, they should be updated. Compound that with, I guess, Lakeville has a policy of not allowing their volunteers to do certain work, which is probably a liability of sorts. Here in Free Town, we, we leased them like a very low, like a dollar amount per year, and allow the league volunteers to all come in and like, help break, shovel things out, things of that nature. It helps maintain the fields quite, quite, quite nicely. Lakeville doesn't have that same way of doing it, and I'll, I suggest to them is like, maybe ask Lakeville if that's something they can do, whether on a temporary, a temporary basis or long-term basis. So I, so I told them I'd bring it up here during the joint meeting to see what, what we can do to help three hundred kids, sixty percent of them are from Lakeville, enjoy Ted Williams. Because right now, for T-ball and rookie, some minor league games goes to Ted Williams, but the lights are out, so they can't play at night, so some lights are out, not all, all right? I'll take that back. So they usually, mostly use Free Town for tournaments and late night games, which is great for us, but there's also certain games that you could have thousands of people show up that Lakeville could benefit as well from. So as a joint meeting, what can we do to help the baseball, soccer, field hockey from playing on the fields like Ted Williams intended to? So that's my spiel. Just trying to advocate for the kids of both our towns to have a nice conditioned fields to enjoy.
So, you know, we're the select board, we do have a designated Parks Commission elected, and they are, you know, the entity that oversees, you know, our, our parks. Claire Bond, John Pond, and Ted Williams. So the discussion obviously would need to start there, you know, with the concerns, getting on the agenda, having the conversation. And then if it's a, if it's a capital, or if it's an additional, you know, outside the budget type, you know, discussion, that's where, you know, it would come to the select board and possibly through the town administrator. If it's, you know, for, I don't know, materials, or, you know, who, who does it? But the conversation needs to take place with the Parks Commission. They are the entity that makes the decisions for those.
And so you know, Lorraine, that discussion has been had between different organizations and the Parks Commission. And everything that I've said today is based on their, their conversations, and they have been on the agenda. It just seems like they can't use their voluntary base as, as often as they can, let's say here in Free Town, right? Because it, it would offset quite a bit of the, the maintenance of the fields, allowing them to come in, using the proper materials, proper machinery, and things like that, like we do in Free Town, to come in and take care of the fields a little bit better. It's, it's a lot of work for a baseball field. Again, it's not like soccer, where you can, the grass grows and you cut it on a daily basis or, or weekly basis. There's a lot, quite a bit of specialized maintenance of those fields that they would be more than willing to put their time into it, if Lakeville allowed it, so.
Well, I guess maybe through, Andrew, maybe that's a conversation, you know, that maybe you can have with the chair of the Parks Commission, just to kinda get a, an understanding of maybe the challenges that maybe the, you know, that the Parks Commission has with, I mean, we, obviously, you know, we support recreational activities in our town fully, but I know that this board won't overstep, you know, any decisions that, you know, the Parks Commission makes. But if it's for an improvement, you know, to our parks, I think that, you know, we'll, we can do what we can.
One hundred percent. This is the conversation of, of, like the, the old saying, we don't know what we don't know, right? There are some things I didn't know how it worked in Lakeville versus Free Town, and through this experience or talking with the different leagues, I'm better, more familiar with it, and they, they say a lot of great things about the Parks Commission, right? And I agree, it goes through them, but just for your awareness, they could use your, your, your back as well.
You have, what is it, Little Fenway?
Correct, we have, well, for baseball, we have Little Fenway, we have K R Resendes for softball, and then we have Long Pond for football. So we're spread out versus Ted Williams, which is great, all in one area.
Yeah, we got, we'll have Little Ted, we'll have a Little Ted.
I'm the liaison from the park, uh, with the Parks Department from the Board of Selectmen, so I'll, I'll work with Andrew on this a little bit, and I have no objection to swatting the hornet's nest at all.
I should say, they've made a capital request for Ted Williams' improvements to the fields, fiscal twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Maybe this discussion will push that up to twenty-seven or earlier, maybe, but I can get back to everybody.
Does the, I have a quick question, does the fees that, that Chuck and Bill was talking about, you know, whether they're increased or not, are they just going to the general fund, or are those, is there like a revolving fund?
We have an enterprise account, so they go to that.
Okay.
Yep, somewhat revolving fund.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, I probably used the wrong terminology, but you know what I meant.
Yeah, same, same deal.
Yeah, my, my goal, and your goal as well, is to get these kids playing whatever the sport there is, right? And we have the facility safely, correct. And, you know, right now, we have three hundred plus kids in just baseball, four, five hundred in soccer, and then there's other children playing other sports as well, from handball, pickleball, which is picking up in, right? You have a great skate park over there as well. I just wanna see them play, anything we can do to help them, even change the lights. You give us the go, we'll be there tomorrow changing those lights for you, uh, 'cause, so, so the kids can play at night.
We've got that on film.
Do you?
Oh, it's recorded.
And then, not to mention you have beautiful osprey, so I was thinking, was it the osprey? They don't wanna disturb the osprey in their nests, but at the same time, it's, let's get them playing. You and I on a forklift. Thank you.
All right, so I think we're good there, we'll move on?
I think so.
Thank you. So, agenda nine, do we have another agenda?
No.
Oh, okay, I got you, I see what you're doing. All right, so agenda nine is discussion on the status of weed mitigation and any other concerns regarding Long Pond. I know that we did, probably a couple of years ago now, we got some money and did, you know, have that first kind of initial cleanup where we had the, forget the name of the machinery that went out and, you know, got some, rid of some of that weed.
Harvester, I would say, yeah.
Yeah. Had, I don't know if there's even been anything additional done, right, has there?
Yeah, yeah, so I asked to get this put on the agenda, spoke with some people from town, and, you know, we there was some stuff that was brought up about possibly, you know, trying to do some more, and thought that this was a good opportunity to talk to us. So I don't know if anyone from, all right, uh, you just say your name and.
Yeah, so Robert Stefanyan, I'm a Lakeville resident. I serve on the Board of Directors for the Long Pond Association, as do the five folks to my left and right, so that's why we're here. We, we have a couple of handouts and probably a quick three-minute or so summary we could give you all if, if you think it's appropriate, may I have that?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, um, you, so, yeah.
We don't have to travel back to a meeting.
Another meeting, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
So while Mark's passing those out, I'll, I'll hit some quick talking points. Please, if you have some questions for us, comments, suggestions, anything we can clarify, that's why we're all here. We're very passionate about it, and we are happy to get the answers you, or the answers you think the community may need. Uh, so as many of you know, about three years ago, this became a pretty contentious issue for both of our towns and both of our town meetings. What was born from that is actually a great thing. It's, it's the revamped Long Pond Association, we're a nonprofit, we're a 501(c)(3). We've, in, in short time, three years, we've managed to secure about, arguably about a quarter of a million dollars in grant funding, hundreds of bushels of milfoil and fanwort out of the pond. We've utilized things such as an eagle harvester, that I believe the chair was alluding to. We've used Dash, which is diver-assisted suction harvesting, they'll, they'll dive down with, you know, vacuums that will go up on a pontoon boat and vacuum the weeds out that way. We've managed to purchase equipment, we've got trailers to haul the pulled weeds offsite and get them away from the pond. We now have our own dash boat, underwater cameras to help locate the weeds, plotters to chart them, and we can really keep track of all of our efforts to get the weeds out. Aside from just pulling weeds, our mission is to also improve the water quality. We've partnered with folks like the URI and Bridge Otter State University as far as long-term water studies. We've partnered with Serpent and Save the Bay as far as education and outreach programs. And really, the, the important reason we're here tonight is because we need to partner with the towns and the select boards as well, to make sure that we're doing what you folks want us to do, and you folks could maybe, you know, see where we're coming from in, in ways that maybe the towns could help us. So with that, we've, we've got a couple bullet points here. We're not here for like a funding ask, we're, right? We're here to, to let you know what we've done so far, hear what maybe you folks have done so far that we've missed, and see what we can all do together i- in the near future and distant future, to really make this sustainable. Because, let, let's be honest, right, in, in eagle harvest, or mechanical harvesting, divers in the water, at, at some point, you're, you're kinda shoveling against the tide, right? How, how do we make this sustainable? So we've been very lucky, much credit to Martha over here to my right, securing funding from the state. We're under our third round of state funding now, that covers a lot of the contractor costs with the eagle harvester and Dash. We've worked with Bill's folks over at Serp Ed, and Chance Parks from the city of New Bedford. We've assisted with Frag Mighty Pull, and really freeing up a choked-up area of the pond down by Cathedral Camp. What that's all done, though, is it's identified more opportunities that are going to be, they could be more costly, but a bigger issue is that they could become more controversial. That's when we get into things like mechanical harvesting or dredging. The concombs get involved, bigger permitting, and, and it's more of an invasive process, but it's a conversation that needs to be had, because if it's gonna be sustainable, that's when you're looking at things like the dredge, you're looking at talking to New Bedford and Taunton Water about herbicides and, and other things in a, in a drinking water supply. So that's why we're here. I think the only other thing I didn't touch on in my list here would be if, i- if the towns see something that could be an opportunity for us, by all means, please think of us. It, it could be something as simple as a place to store some of this equipment that we're, we're getting. Or, hey, I, I, I think you guys might have missed a great opportunity here with this partnership. Or, hey, if you're gonna apply for more grants, we, we're open to giving you a letter of support. So that's really all we're here for tonight, and I'll end it with, thank you all for your help thus far, 'cause it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think this is awesome, like, you know, an unfortunate truth is that a nonprofit like this can be much more efficient and, you know, agile than, than the town can be trying to solve the same kind of problems, right? It's just, it's, it's hard, right, to do it, so I think this makes a lot of sense, and I, and I think this approach is great. So what are the bullet points, you know, if you don't mind if I start quickly?
Go for it.
So one of the bullet points here is a small storage space, or garage for the dash boat and equipment. Do you have an idea of where specifically that would be helpful, like?
Right now, we're storing it outside at one of our personal residences, so it's, anything's better than where we're at now. It's, it's essentially a talking point for us. It, it could be a private space, it could be a, a, a town-owned space, it could be indoor, it could be outdoor, it could be anything, really.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm thinking like, at least on the Free Town side, right, we have the boat ramp, which probably would be tough because it's federally technically state property. And then, oh yeah, that'd be a good suggestion, Fire Station Two, which is right across the street from, you know, that may, that could be something that we could talk about, if we have space there, too, and they, there's a lot of stuff already being stored there. We just wanna get it out of the elements, right? So that's something that just, you know, reach out to town, I'm not sure if Lakeville has any good locations that you can, can think of, but that's something, that's an easy one that we can help with and actually, yeah, do something quickly, right?
As long as the fire chief gives his blessing.
Yeah, of course. That makes sense. I have like an image, from a Google image map, I was looking at that for some reason, so I think you're right. Yeah, and then, obviously, I think we just need to have open lines of communication between all, you know, all three organizations, you know, your organization and the towns, and I, maybe, I don't know how we formalize that, whether, you know, I'd be interested in having you guys come to, you know, a meeting once a quarter or something like that, to see where you guys stand, something of that nature, and you know, Deb can work with that. But I think it, it's, it's a unique situation where we have two towns, and also there's lots of other towns or, or cities that are impacted by decisions, so a lot of moving parts, right? So I totally appreciate, you know, how things can get more complex, especially when you start getting to more, you know, intense methods of cleaning the pond, that makes a lot sense to me. Those are my thoughts, I'm not sure.
Well, the town of Lakeville has a liaison. Chris Plonka is our. You're our water person.
Oh, yes.
That encompasses all things water.
Can't wait to see you at the next meeting, Chris.
I was thinking of Taunton Water, but okay. New Bedford Water, okay.
But, I mean, obviously, you can lean on the rest of the select board if you.
No, absolutely, I'd be, definitely will until the liaison and, and work with you folks, definitely, absolutely. Feel free to reach out to me.
Yeah.
So I, I just have to say, I worked with, I did work with the MASTOT on getting the Frag Mighty's near Cathedral Camp cleaned up, and then I know our highway department helped with that situation. So we were aware of that, working with that, I worked with Senator Rogers' office as well. When you, the coordination with MASTOT and replacement of the COVERT, there is a COVERT grant, I believe it's open right now. I've, I've done this grant before, but it's, it's, it's extensive, but that's something if, if somebody wants to take on filling out the grant, and I'm more than willing to offer whatever I can to help get that processed, but there is a, a, a MAST COVERT grant, it has a lot of ecological value, so I'm not sure what you have. But those are things you can look at, and we can, I can help you with it, or point you in the right direction. I, I can't do it for you, but I can say, hey, I've done this, and this is what I would do. So that's out there right now, I hope it hasn't closed, but it's available. So there are definitely grants for that. Always, that I'm always looking for grants at, you know, and I'll keep my eyes open if something comes up that I think will benefit you. One of the things that I came to mind, too, is I thought that there was something in the works for dredging the basket, to keep the pond levels from flooding, from flooding the properties, and I thought that was in the works already with Serp Ed.
So it is, it, it's our understanding that it is, and luckily, in the Kushner, they just, they just wrapped up dredging in their pond, too. So it's, it's being done around here, we're hoping it's kinda lost a lot of the negative connotation it might have had, because it's, I, I think we're hitting a point where it may be a necessary move.
And I know that I see grants a lot for properties that are flooded multiple times. I, I haven't done one, I haven't looked into it, I don't have, I haven't had the need to do that in Free Town. But I can certainly, when I see them, I can send them your way via an email address, hey, look at this grant. They're kind of a new set of grants at the government, and those are probably more federal than they are state level, which is a whole nother ball of wax and grants, but it might be something, say, you've got some residents along Long Pond that consistently flood, that it would help, it may help raise their house, I know that sounds crazy, but that, that's exactly what they're doing. They're trying to get these houses out of the flood plain, out of the, so they're not continuously paying insurance to repair the houses. So I will look and send you whatever I can find, and if somebody has a question on a grant application or something, I'd be more than willing to try to help that way.
Thank you.
Now, I have to apologize to Mr. Plonka. He does cover water in Lakeville, but Mr. Hunt is our Assawamse Pond Complex.
Who quietly sits here and watches the bus hit you and continue on.
I mean, my arm's already sore, 'cause Chris just punched it, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to do it, I've attended the Long Pond Association meeting in the past, and I'm happy to work with those folks on some things. Bob, I just had a couple of questions, do you, do you have an idea of what the daily cost is when you're doing the dredging? I, I mean, when you're doing the weed?
I'll defer to John Worley off to my left or my, my right.
Eco harvesting is five thousand dollars a day, and Dash is four thousand dollars a day.
And will there be?
The day is about eight hours.
Will there be a savings for you folks now that you've, or you're trying to establish your own boat? Will that, that'll save you some money there?
Yes, on the Dash end, yes. But the Dash end doesn't do eco harvesting, that's a specialized machine. We don't own one of those yet, we would like to, but we don't own it.
Okay.
It's about a hundred grand. Cover a lot more square footage with the eco harvester in the right conditions.
Yes.
Dash is more concentrated, it's a slower-moving process.
It's deeper water.
But then while we're on the cost of these things, Lakeville's, I think, uniquely positioned, if dredge, if a, a partnered town LPA dredge project was to kick off, I think the town has access to the Plymouth County Commissioners on that Plymouth, Plymouth County dredge, that I think could be a very cost-effective tool.
Okay.
Available to us. Something to put on the radar.
And I, you know, I, I hesitate to say it, but I. And I, you know, I hesitate to say it, but I, you know, especially with the budgets that we're looking at in the future, but I didn't know if there would be a possibility at some point in time for the two towns to partner a little bit, maybe do some matching funds for these folks that are doing small projects. I didn't know if that might be something we can do at some point in time.
That would, that would be great down the road. And then the things that you were referring to before, the grants that are out there right now, a lot of the things for the buyouts, it's federal usually, you know, BRCA, you know, FEMA, stuff like that. But I think one of the things that we've been doing so far, and we've been very conscious of the fact that when we go for grants, you want to try to minimize any burden to the town. So the things we've been doing, like the water quality sampling around the ponds with Bridgewater State University. Bridgewater matched us dollar for dollar. We got a match from the Taunton River Stewardship Council. And Bridgewater matched us with that, so it was federal money and state money. We've tried to get grants as a nonprofit with no match required. Or we've tried to get services, you know, in lieu of direct cash, you know, requirements. And that's worked out well too. And there's a grant right now, it's going to be a brand new grant program with Mass DOT, a culvert grant, as well as the traditional DER grants that you were talking about. And it's the first time out of the chute. So we've been talking to District Five about maybe taking a look at the culvert over there on Route Eighteen, down near the church. And we're working with mosquito control to get the Frag Mighty's out, and they're going to come back. Chance Perks from New Bedford's been working with us, and he's done a great job. So all of this minimizes cost to the town, and we're looking at that ahead because, you know, we don't want to put any, any burden on the town, unnecessary burden, because it's tight budget times. But I think, I think working with partners like that, it's all about partnerships and collaboration, you know, much like what you guys are doing tonight. That's the approach we take. We've also gotten a lot of the equipment that we've gotten, we've gotten through federal grants through the Southern New England Environmental Program. And that got us some computers, some monitoring programs, some cameras, things like that, that allow us to do work in the ponds without, again, having to get state, federal, or local people involved. So if we can work with you, there may be times that we ask you maybe for a letter of support on a grant, but I, obviously, we discussed this well in advance with you, so you'd know just what we're doing, how we're doing it. And like people were saying, maybe help, help meet the joint needs of both towns and kind of better serve the region. That's the approach we take, so that's where we are.
Awesome.
I think a letter of support is obviously easy. One thing I wanted to mention is we also, one of the things that we have issues with is the boat ramp, right? Which is in the Free Town side, state-owned but managed by the town of Free Town. And one of the things that we've discussed over there was putting in a wash station. I know, Bill, maybe you've been part of some of those conversations. It came up that that really wasn't practical there. But the issue is the milfoil weed getting on the boats and going in the water and then polluting the water. So when we had Doug Cameron down from the state, he said, your best defense is people around the pond that are passionate about the pond to help you at the boat ramp. So that's going to be my ask to you guys, how can you help us at the boat ramp? To better manage that and, and better, you know, educate people there so that they don't bring things into this pond that shouldn't be in the pond. So I'll leave it at that, but we can talk more about that, so.
All right.
All right. Awesome. And we'll have to get a designated liaison, I'm thinking maybe Town Planner for this stuff, it's a lot grant-heavy. So, but we can talk about that as well, make sure we're constant communication. All right, any other questions on this? Good? All right, I think you guys are right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to item 10 here, discussion on the status of audit of school financial transactions. I don't know where we stand on those. I remember lots of talk about an audit.
So I can add, Doug and I have been attending the regional finance subcommittee meetings. There was another, it was, last meeting was during the summer, I believe.
Yeah, I'm off with track of time, but yeah.
It is still an item of discussion. There's been no, I mean, just for the record, to remind everybody that both town select boards voted for that type of audit. Scope and type to be, to be determined.
Yep.
We had, there were some setbacks with the regional finance subcommittees and turnover and stuff like that, the new chair. Again, we brought it up as a topic during the summer, and we have another meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, I believe, couple of weeks. Looking over this, it's a couple of weeks. And, and it is going to be discussed again. And I will say, as me representing the town of Lakeville, I am still pushing for it. I'm a supporter of it, as long as it's done correctly and the scope is defined. And I think that's some of the, some of the challenges we had in the last year or so, was trying to define the scope and getting the right people. But I'm confident that we can move forward and continue with that and move forward with an audit that has the right scope and achieves the objectives that we're looking for. And I'll, Jared, if you want to.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think you nailed it there. You know, that was kind of the conversation of the whole group. I felt like it was a good conversation and it was the first one I was involved with, but it was that, right? Like, if we're going to do this and we're going to do it, you're going to do it right, you're going to have the right people involved. And, yeah, there's still obviously a lot to be determined, but I felt like it was heading, I felt positive walking out of that meeting, the end of it all, so.
And also, like, getting into some kind of cadence that, like, makes sense, you know, to have an audit. I mean, and I know there's already some audits, right, that is a thing, but yeah. I think, I think it makes sense, you know, given, you know, some of the recent events, so.
Unfortunately, the pace is not what we'd hoped for. But again, there were some challenges with some of the, the membership of the regional finance committee, but I'm confident those have been addressed and we can start to make some progress over the coming months.
Okay. Yes?
Chris, I was the former treasurer. The documentation I received from the auditor, Linton Murray. I submitted confidential document on it, and in there, I was asked questions as to what I wanted to do and if I had any questions about anything. So I did fill it out and I put down where I thought there were problems and where things needed to be looked at. It is a confidential document, so I can't tell you, but I just wanted to be here to tell you and be as transparent as I could. I am no longer the treasurer, but when I did it, I was, and that was two months ago.
Okay. I appreciate that. Yeah. Any other questions from this? I mean, I think so, the path is still moving forward. Another regional school finance committee meeting coming up. And now it's you, right? I would make an outsend. All right. Any other questions? Okay. So, item 11, this is any matter that may impact both towns. I know Deb has one thing she wants to bring up, so you can't leave.
So close.
I wanted to mention the, we've talked, Andrew and I, about the possible getting an IMA with the city of New Bedford Water District. So I, one of the issues that the town had was we don't currently have an IMA with New Bedford. We have to negotiate a new one, ours has expired. But our town council is the same as New Bedford's town council, KP Law represents New Bedford. So we had to go out and find council to represent us for this particular matter. That is on the selectman's agenda tonight to look at McGregor, which will represent the town of Free Town in those negotiations. And so once they're on board, we're going to be looking forward to moving forward with that with New Bedford, because we have our own, we need to get that resolved for the town of Free Town and New Bedford. But I know that, that you, that the town of Lakeville have talked to me about it, I saw it on one of your selectmen's meetings as well. So just so you know where we are with that situation. We now have, we should have council to represent us to move forward.
Okay. The reason I asked originally was, remember Plonka had asked me about looking into water source for the Rocky Woods project. The only source that really makes sense for that is New Bedford. So I met with New Bedford and they quickly said that for this best to happen, it would be a regional solution with Free Town. Because obviously, the pipes come through, go through Free Town. So I think I met with Deb a few months ago and we talked about potentially a three-way IMA, so.
And I know that the schools would be part of that conversation as well, because, you know, I believe that we're still on a well.
Yep, yes.
And I know that that's come up periodically, wouldn't it be great?
Absolutely.
Had water.
I'm going to say that it's very, very, very preliminary, like, we have a water and sewer commissioners, like, nothing's been voted to say, yes, we do X or yes. It's very, this board hasn't addressed it either, so I'm just, I'm just giving you the update that we now have, we have an avenue to move forward, but nothing's been decided.
But the need is there.
Absolutely, and to Deb's point, how this all initially started, having an agreement in place will be key for us. I mean, we've, we've had some issues and everyone kind of tosses their hands up and says, well, they, we don't have an agreement and it's, you know, it's not ours, well, it's yours, and back and forth. So I think this makes sense on so many levels, even if Lakeville never ties into it. It's something that, as a town, we have to do, so. But if, if it gets water to the school too and that, you know, that can be a huge win, so. Schools, plural, not a school, so. Lighting stuff.
That's where I'm at with that.
So I think that's, that's the end of our agenda. Anything else?
Six months.
Six months. Let's do it again.
All right, ball it over on our side.
I was going to say same place, same time, but no, because we had to switch. We're going to switch, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'll close our meeting and then we'll reopen it for the next meeting, right?
I wouldn't close.
Okay, we're not closing our meeting.
Nope.
All right, then I guess.
Is there an opportunity to bring up any outside business that wasn't already on the agenda that impacts both towns?
I mean, yeah, item 11, it says any matters that may impact both towns. Does it impact both towns?
I think so. If not, you can quickly shut me down.
Okay.
Okay, I had the pleasure of meeting the Free Town Selectmen a few months ago. I was the victim of the jet skis being stolen off of Long Pond. And I know that the boat ramp is in Free Town, but it's also supposed to be, like, kind of jointly managed. So I know we're not going to come to a resolution here, but I have not come to a Lakeville town meeting. But I kind of, like, this was a perfect opportunity to get both towns talking about what we can do to, I guess, increase security or policing or controls there. And I know funding is an issue when there's big events, so all of that burden falls to Free Town to, to pay for. So I, I don't know what the appropriate way to, like, get everybody together to talk about it. I also know it's challenging because it's owned by the state. And that is frustrating as well, because any other state recreational place closes at dusk. And that place, the pond does not close at dusk. So that is frustrating, that the, you know, the gates are wide open and I understand, like, people could be on the pond, but it just, it just is kind of a nest of issues.
Would you just say your name and where you're from?
Absolutely, so sorry. Kimberly Levitt, and I'm a resident of Lakeville.
Yeah, believe me. Sorry to hear about what happened with jet skis, but the boat ramp is a constant source of all sorts of different problems. And this is where I can speak to that, she's been managing that for a while, it's.
Yeah.
So I don't have any answers for you right now.
I know. And I'm sympathetic to.
We did add cameras.
We've added cameras.
You did?
We just voted on that very recently.
They're already in.
They're, they're in.
There's one, there's one in, and then may add a second one.
Okay.
So that's a step in the right direction.
Yeah. That's you, I'm glad that you were able to figure out the connectivity and all that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were able to do that. I don't think Lakeville really has any, anything to do with the boat ramp, other than their, their residents might use it, but, you know, it's Free Town that really manages it. Not that we'd love for you to.
You can have a question.
I'm sure you have enough of your own.
Water director.
Well, the reason I brought it up is because when I was here last time, the question was asked, well, where did you report it? And I said, well, I called Lakeville Police, because I live in Lakeville. So then, like, that kind of made me wonder, like, who should I have called? The access point was obviously in Free Town, but the crime happened in the Lakeville side.
Yeah, I mean, I would say you did the right thing, because you didn't know that if it went through the boat ramp or not at that point, right? You just said it's, someone stole my jet skis at my house in Lakeville, so you called the Lakeville Police Department. That a hundred percent makes sense.
Yeah. So I just didn't know, like, you know, as we talk about things and budget, like, there's the spirit of cooperation. And I did hear, and I guess, it's hearsay, but like, friends of ours knew what happened. And she told me she was at a bar, I don't remember where, a restaurant, and she overheard people talking about the boat ramp. And so she started asking questions, and they said, oh yeah, you know what we do? We got a ticket once, so we don't pay, we just put the ticket in our windshield, because you can't get double ticketed in the day. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, I was like, people know how to, like.
Surprised they're wrong, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, like, I just thought I would pass that along, but.
No, that's, no, that's good to know, I appreciate that.
Because it just comes back to, like, access and who's there and who's paying, and I don't know, I don't know.
No, it's a, yeah. I wish I, I wish I could have had a better answer, but we are, we are taking steps and, you know, and reach out, you can reach out to our, to our board and, you know, if any particular items, we can get that on an agenda going forward, you know, so.
Okay, all right, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Lakeville Select Board meeting at seven twenty-six. All right.
All right.
Senator Lee, adjourn.
Yeah.
Plonka, aye. Hunt, aye. Carboni, aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it, guys.
Not this one, Stan.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me, we have to call, we have to, we have to.
Listen, I got a whole.
What's that, vote for it? Yeah.
And I do not have that on.
Motion made, second.
It was going to be, I think, the fifth and then it got.
Okay, all right, so we are now back in open session from recess. We're going to start off with the item thirteen, this is open session minutes from October sixth, twenty twenty-five, and October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. I'll entertain a motion that we approve open session minutes from ten six and ten twenty, twenty twenty-five.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item fourteen, discussion awarding the invitation to bid for Fire Station Number Two vinyl siding and replacement window projects. It looks like one, the one, one of them that we got was substantially lower than everybody else. And that was from VRG Contractor Corporation, and it was.
FRG.
Like frog, FRG.
FRG, I meant to say FRG. And it was seventy-four.
Fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty.
My brain's going too mush. Long day, okay. Find my packet here. All right, so that's, and it was substantially cheaper than all the other bids. Okay, great, so with that, I want to entertain a motion to award the bid for the Fire Station Two vinyl siding and replacement window projects to FRG Contractor Corporation.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so item fifteen is just the agreement between FRG and town of Free Town. So with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town of Free Town and FRG Contractor Corporation for Fire Station Number Two vinyl siding and replacement window project.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, Trevor.
Yes.
Can I just ask, is this now the end of the Fire Station remodel, or is there still more?
If that's a Deb question.
This is Fire Station Two.
Oh, two?
This is the one up on County Road, is going to get windows and vinyl siding.
Okay.
So nothing to do with the.
Good question, though, I think that, because everyone's like, well, we just finished this, why are we, you know, why did we do that during the other thing? Great question, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No. Okay. So now, item sixteen, this is discussion about whether to declare a property located at map two-ten lot one-oh-eight, taking a tax title as surplus. And this is on the agenda because the state wants it, or?
Yeah, well, I think that it's something that we own, that we, we took for tax title. They have, I think, I believe, a year to redeem it, which is coming up momentarily in the next couple of days. And then if not, if you declare it a surplus, meaning we don't want to retain it, we don't want, the town of Free Town doesn't want to keep it for its own uses. If we declare it surplus, then I do believe that possibly the DCR would like to purchase it.
Okay, and then they just give us?
They don't pay much, but they just, they just.
Some kind of value.
Yeah.
And it's, it's kind of landlocked, I'm looking at it on the Cessers map. I don't see it as a, you know, something we'd really want to hold on to anyways. Does anyone have any questions or concerns on this?
Did we, we've asked everyone else, right?
Did we send that out to all departments?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that went to department.
We usually, we're, uh, she'll confirm.
Yeah, no, and that's why I'm asking, right, because we normally get confirmation from everyone that they want to, to release it, bless you. And, uh, yeah, but beyond that, I mean, to your point, it's landlocked, it buffers all the.
State forests.
State forest property, so.
And it's next to, yeah, to, to the, for far off, okay. All right, so with that, I want to entertain a motion to declare the property located at map two ten lot one oh eight, uh, as surplus.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item seventeen, discussion of vote whether to send a postcard to all households for the special town meeting on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-sixth. Crazy, that's the first saying twenty twenty-sixth, means it's coming soon. All right, postcards, do we, we did not do a postcard last time.
I don't think we did, but we showed this one, we've got M B T A communities on there.
Absolutely.
I know it's expensive, but I think it makes sense.
Typically, finance committee will, um, do the special town meeting postcards. The Board of Selectmen does the annual.
Yep.
Town meeting postcards. We are more than happy to do it with the increasing cost, I'm not sure if we have that money in our account.
Just let us, show, I mean.
We'll figure it out.
Well, we can figure that part out, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll usually draft, someone gets a quote, so we'll know.
Okay.
And then we'll just have to use something out of the selectmen's budget for, for one of our accounts to pay for it, because we want to make sure that everybody knows that, that M B T A communities is coming back, and that, you know, they have, have the information.
And just, like, it's worth it, just so there's not any appearance that we're trying to, that the board's trying to sneak something by, like, I want to make, make very clear and very over communicate that, like, and so everyone knows, you know, and this is a tricky one too, because like, we can't, obviously can't be slanted in any one direction, but I think, you know, we have to make sure everyone's aware that this is on the agenda.
Um, I think we really need informational meetings and more than one.
Yeah.
Before, um, the town needs to be very clear on what those options are and what consequences in either direction.
Yeah.
The joint meeting that we're involved in proposed that already, we already got dates on the calendar to have public meetings with information so that we educate the people as much as possible of the pros and cons of both directions, so.
Who, who's gonna be delivering that information?
So, so far, myself, Debbie, um, Chad, uh, Cavalo from Planning Board, and Nancy, our planner. Uh, between the four of us, we should have no problem.
Yeah.
If you need me, let me know.
Somebody from the Bolar should be here, there's consultants that we're.
Consultants as well.
But yeah, I do, I want to say, I don't know if we, I believe there's meeting dates, though.
There is.
Or if not, they'll be in the next couple of days.
Because a party thinks that it should be delivered by someone who has, like, who, who's not from the town, and not directly impacted by it, just so that there's like no, because like, it's a very controversial issue that people have very strong opinions on. Like, and if we have like a third party, and if it's someone from representing the state, that's not even great, because they're gonna have their own spin on that thing, right? Where it's like, we need someone who's like, like, I almost think of like an attorney, that's what I think, like, and it kind of, too, which would be very expensive. But just to give the kind of matter of fact, this is what it is, this is what it means, you know?
Yeah, you, you're absolutely right.
We can work on that, I know we do have the consultant, and I know that, um, not the consultant, but I've spoken with people from Chappa, Citizens for Housing, and they, um, sent us a consultant prior to the last town meeting. Like, we can see if they will speak, they're the ones that gave me some of the presentation materials last time, so we can find out if they can do a presentation, and then we can just take questions if.
Yeah, right, and they need to be prepared to like, like, there's gonna be people who are upset about this, and, and, uh, you know, it's not like, you know.
Yeah, I think Governor Haley has, um, I don't want to mistake, but I think she has a nonprofit that actually has been funding these con- uh, uh, consults for the town, so we can probably get one of them, isn't it, isn't it Governor Haley's nonprofit?
Yeah, I think, I believe, I believe you're correct on that.
Yeah.
All right, interesting.
I know, that's right.
Okay, so, all that to say, so, ju- ju- back to what agenda item seventeen is, it's just a vote to send a postcard, are we in consensus, we should, so. Uh, I'll entertain, entertain a motion to send a postcard to all households for the special town meeting on one twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-sixth.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to agenda item eighteen, this is for the monthly contribution rates for retiree health benefits. Trust effective one one twenty twenty-sixth through twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-sixth, which we don't have any kind of, uh, say in this, but we still have to vote on it, right?
Yes, we have to vote on the, um, the, the rates, which have gone up between fourteen and eighteen percent. Um, and on top of last year's, like, nineteen percent. So, I, I do, I will be coming forth before the board to talk about how we, um, mitigate these increasing costs like this, because it's not sustainable for the town on, on any level. I have a couple of ideas, I mean, one of the issues that I brought up last year was that the town is funding the contribution rate of retirees higher than their ac- active employees, which really makes no sense, right? I don't know how that happened, but it did, uh, we, we, the, the board reduced it from ninety-five to ninety percent. Um, I'd like to see you almost get it down to the seventy-five, twenty-five, like most of the, um, active employees are. I know that, that, that some of the retirees will push back on that, so my other thought process, and I will formally bring this before the board, is that possibly going forward, we, you vote that anybody that retires after July one, the contribution rate for the, for the retire, you know, for their plans is comparable to what they have while they're in active employees. Doesn't really make sense that you're paying, uh, twenty-five percent of your health insurance, and then when you retire, you only have to pay ten percent. It doesn't, it's, it should, it should actually be, a lot of towns are fifty-fifty, once you retire, the town repays fifty percent of your health insurance.
Yeah.
And we're constantly trying to fund our O P E B fund, which is, you know, there to pay the benefits self-sustaining at some point, but I, that, we're never gonna get self-funded, right now, that it's projected that we need twenty million dollars for that. We're never gonna get there, um, and, and we've been funding it heavily since I've been here, uh, we're never gonna get twenty million dollars in the bank, uh, because we're just constantly paying these higher rates, so something that needs to come, and I know it won't be a popular topic, but it needs to happen, or, you know, sustainability gets really, um, difficult.
Okay.
But for right now, we just need to vote these rates.
Okay, and so, yeah, they go up a bunch, that's my official. All right, so with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve the monthly contribution rates for retiree health benefits. Trust effective one one twenty twenty-sixth through twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-sixth.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, agenda item nineteen, um, this is discussion of vote whether to approve the agreement between the town of Free Town and Spinnaker Technologies for I T services at the fire and police department effective eleven one twenty twenty-sixth through ten thirty-one twenty twenty-sixth, and this is, we already have them?
Yeah, this is who they currently used, and they're happy with.
And same rates, I mean, I think it's one buck twenty-five an hour for most stuff. All right. If they're happy with it, and the rates don't change, I don't think it really needs that much of a conversation. So with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town of Free Town and Spinnaker Technologies for I T services at the fire and police department effective eleven one twenty twenty-five through twelve, sorry, ten thirty-one twenty twenty-sixth.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, agenda item twenty, this is discussion of vote whether to move forward with the land purchase on Bullock Road.
So we have to give them, uh, thirty days notice if we're gonna back out, so we have till the end of this year to purchase this land, so if we want to back out, we have to notify them by the end of November. Though, obviously, you've gotten the turtle report with the turtle whisperer, that, that that's gonna, our natural heritage is gonna impede what we can do with the land. That being said, tomorrow we're doing test pits, and we'll have more data, so I'm not sure you want to make this vote tonight, um.
Yep, I say we hold.
The words are out of my mouth.
Yeah, let's pass on this, and then.
I.
And they also have asked for an extension to, just to, for the, uh, sale of the land, probably for, you know, tax reasons, they want to do it after the first of the year.
Fiscal twenty twenty-five.
So they've asked for an extension on January eighth, so that will be, be coming for your signature if, if you decide to move forward. But we have, we have a little bit of time to make this decision, so we'll have more information at the next meeting.
Yeah, this, this would be preemptive to me if we went out there tomorrow and we did test pits that weren't favorable.
Right.
Right, so, um, so I just think that holding on this for now makes a hundred percent sense.
Okay, great. Other than that, so moving on to, uh, agenda item, what's, so what about twenty-two, though, that kind of?
So these things are kind of, i- if you were to go through, do you want to obtain title insurance, I mean, I need these things al- almost to get myself ready. And you, you want title insurance.
Yeah, I would say, it seems like crazy not to.
Absolutely crazy.
All right, so I, I can vote that, I think we can still vote on these?
Yep, if we, if, yep.
Okay, so this one, so, I want to entertain a motion that if we do move forward buying the Bullock Road purchase, that we do obtain title insurance.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then next is just having Deb be able to sign the document, documents, so I want to entertain a motion that we authorize town administrator to sign, uh, documents pertaining to the Bullock Road land purchase.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to agenda item twenty-four. Um, so this is discussion of vote whether to purchase a new trailer for the transfer station. Uh, I saw a picture of the trailer, looks like a pretty nice trailer.
Yeah, um, we're trying to get procurement satisfied so we can purchase it before it's not available, but the trailer down at the transfer station is, um, it's, it's just, it's, it's time, it's leaking, it's it's got, it's got issues, so Carl and Vicky went out and saw this one, they both like it, it does not have a bathroom in it, it has a big clause in it, we'll have to retrofit the bu- the, the bathroom.
Okay.
Um, but Carl seems to think that's okay, it's exactly the same size as the one that's there, which makes it easy to pull that one off.
The footprint is the same, yeah.
So, um, it's not a done deal in terms of I have to satisfy procurement, but I'm working on that. I think, um, I just wanted to have that conversation with you guys before we move forward.
Yeah, it seems to make sense to me, and it seems to be a, a more, you know, budget-conscious way of
Yeah.
of getting a new trailer, it was, the, the cost wasn't too.
Yeah, it's about forty-eight thousand dollars.
It's a used trailer, but.
But it's big, it's.
It's a lot better than what's currently there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's in good shape compared to, um, you know, compare that to, say, the pod, which is, uh, the, the, uh, COA pod, that was two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, exactly, that's what, that was my frame, frame of reference, and I was like, okay, well, this is, you know. So, and, so we're not gonna, to vote on this here, we're just gonna say that we want to buy one, but you still have some work to do to figure out to buy that specific one, right?
Yeah, so I mean, if I, if I can satisfy procurement, which I just have to get quotes from, I, they, obviously we have their quote, we can't find another one like it, right, so we just need other places to say they, they can't quote it, because there isn't one. So, yeah, I, I just would like a vote for me to purchase that, that trailer if, if I can satisfy procurement.
Okay, so I want to entertain a motion, um, that, oh, sorry, let me back up, I want to entertain a motion to purchase the trailer from the packet, um, if the, if town administrator can satisfy procurement requirements for that purchase.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Boom. All right, agenda item twenty-five. This is an easy one, tree lighting events on twelve seven twenty twenty-five from four to seven, um. So here is, do we want to approve exclusive use of the bandstand?
Well, that's tough.
Any grinches in the crowd? All right, so that, I want to entertain a motion to approve exclusive use of the brandstand for a tree lighting event on twelve seven twenty twenty-five from four to seven P M.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item twenty-six, discussion of vote whether authorized town administrator sign proposal for appraisal of parcel two four zero dash zero one six, which.
This is a recent tax taking, right, that now the new laws require us to do an appraisal of the property.
I saw the appraiser, I saw the, it's like fourteen hundred bucks for the appraisal or something like that.
Thirty-five hundred?
Thirty-five?
Yeah.
Been amazing, so.
Because it's a commercial?
We take something in tax title because we're not collecting the taxes due on it, and then it ends up putting a financial burden on the town to continue on with the process.
Right, so we have to get an appraiser, and, and so if you, you had voted to keep that property, but if you had voted to, to not keep it, we have to get an appraiser, then we have to get an auctioneer, we have to auction it off, or, or try to sell it, and whatever we retain over what's owed in taxes, we have to pay back to the owner. So it's actually like, hey, I don't, I really want to sell my property, but I don't want to deal with it, so let the town do it, and I'll still get the, the.
You'll still make the money out of it.
Yeah, I'll still get.
And when we say taxes back due, right, so say, we're just gonna throw a theoretical number out there, they owe ten thousand dollars. Would it be the ten thousand dollars plus these fees?
Yeah, plus the fees, we, we get the fees, but like, you know, we, we essentially have to do all the work.
Yeah.
And if it, they get the money.
That is interesting.
It is very interesting, it's all new, too.
But we, but we need to get the appraisal anyways.
This is law now, we have to do it. So.
Which is interesting, maybe we should, I wonder if we can make a bylaw or something that, so we don't have to vote on this every time this happens, and we just, it's just, it's something you do, right?
And we could probably just have it, yeah, yeah.
Like a policy thing, I'm not sure, but okay. So that, I want to entertain a motion to authorize town administrator sign the proposal for appraisal for parcel two four zero dash zero one six.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, agenda item twenty-seven, this is discussion and vote whether to approve fee agreement for special counsel of McGregor, like, how do you say that?
Uh, McGee.
McGee and Stevens, P C. Um, this is for a situation where our counsel and another town or city's counsel is the same coun- counsel, so we have to go and use a third-party counsel.
Just the new bed for New Bedford.
K P Law represents Buffalo, so we have to go get outside counsel.
Yeah, so I did interview them, I, I do feel like they're really well-versed in the water I M As. Um, they're expensive.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's just try to mitigate their founding partner, because I saw his rate.
Yeah.
And it's very expensive.
All of them.
Yeah, um, but, you know, they, they have sample I M A agreements already, I, I've talked to them, so I think it's who we need to get the job done with New Bedford, um, and, and I'm ready to start that process at some point, so we can finally get that taken care of.
Now, it's a silly question, but do they, does New Bedford have to also go get outside counsel, or can they use K P Law?
I, I think they have to get, they can't, they can't use K P Law against us, because, right, so I think they're gonna have to get a separate counsel, too. And I don't know what K P Law does for them, I don't think K P Law does everything like they do for us.
Yeah.
I think K P Law is their special town council, but K P Law is, when I talked to them originally, they were like, we can't, we can't touch it, because, because we represent the city in New Bedford.
It's an interesting problem with K P Law, because they represent everybody.
So is Lakeville going to be part of that negotiation, or are they completely separate?
I don't know that, I think that's a whole, much bigger discussion in terms of, that's a, don't forget, we have a water sewer commissioner, like, I'm, I'm not stepping on any toes, they, they, they know that I'm doing this piece so that we can negotiate I M A with New Bedford. I don't think Lakeville's ready yet, and I'm, that, they're, Lakeville's talking about coming through, using Free Town water lines to feed a subdivision up on Free Town Street, which we've all heard of, the Rocky Woods, the big subdivision, and then pa- bypassing that and going to the school. But they don't have a water department, so I think the thought is possibly that Free Town would manage that for Lakeville. That's a big, that's a big thing, and I don't, that, nobody's discussed that, there's been no votes, I don't know. So I'm gonna say right now, my goal is to get an I M A with New Bedford, and clarify whose line is whose, and who's responsible for what, and get that, um, done, and I don't know how quickly we're gonna be able to do that. So if Lakeville figures out what they're doing with the Rocky Woods, or whatever it's called, then possibly I join them in, or we do something different with them, but this was more to just get, get our issue, um, negotiated with the Bedford before winter comes, because we know last year what happened with the leak in the county road, and we.
So that'll take care of any of those problems.
We're hoping.
Well, at least we'll know, we'll know who's on the hook.
Who's responsible.
Yeah, we want to clarify.
Because that's what they're dealing with.
But disagreement will clear up.
Yeah.
Who exactly is doing what.
Do they have to sign an agreement?
What if they don't want to sign the agreement?
I mean, I think the goal is to negotiate an agreement, so we're gonna sit in a room until we can get something on paper, and I think, I mean, I was pretty successful with them the last time, it, when I found, I mean, I showed them everything, like, you are responsible, I think they finally realized that when I got to their counsel, um.
That's good.
So I'm hoping that we can just, you know, go in there and show them, look, you, you, this is, this is from eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred, you own this.
Yeah.
If they want us to take it over, that's gonna be the negotiation with the water and sewer commissioners, like, okay, we'll take it over if you pay to fix all the lines, because we believe there may be lead lines in their lines.
Because currently, we're just, I don't want to like go, like, we're paying them. Cause currently, we're just, I don't wanna go, but like, we're paying them.
Yeah.
Right, like, for the water, and there's a premium associated with what we're paying them, assumed to maintain the infrastructure.
Yeah.
And they're giving us the water, but they're not maintaining the infrastructure, so like, that's.
I think, I think it will be good to get it done and get it clarified in, in writing.
Yeah.
So that every time an issue doesn't come up, it's like, no, this isn't mine, that's yours, no, it's yours, it's still.
That makes total sense to me.
And if they want us to take over theirs, then some kind of a plan for that, oh, we do, well, you know, twenty years, we're just gonna take your custom, customers over and whatever, so. I don't know, and like, again, that's, that's gonna be the Water Sewer Commissioners for a big part of it, and then it'll come back to this board.
Okay, all right, and then, all right, so that's cool, so.
Did you vote to approve?
No, we didn't, so I want to entertain a motion to approve the fee agreement for special town council for McGregor, Legear, and Stevens, P C.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, agenda item twenty-eight, discussion of vote whether to approve the snowplow applications for S N, S M Automotive LLC for the winter twenty-five, twenty-six season, they got everything they need to win?
Lola, they just need to provide the driver's license once they've assigned the drivers, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so all the other paperwork is here.
Okay, and that's normal, normal protocol?
Sometimes they know who they are and they provide them at the time of the application, but other times.
Okay, as long as we don't let them.
Provide it before they can flower and get paid.
Okay, perfect.
I think he had nine trucks?
Yes.
He has nine trucks?
Yeah, and he's hoping to have two more, I believe, right? Yep.
Let's go.
Yeah, so that's a good.
That fills a big hole.
Yes.
Thank you, S M Automotive LLC. All right, so with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve the snowplow applications for S M Automotive LLC for the winter twenty-five, twenty-six season.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The excitement in your voice.
You know.
Well, I just, that's like a, like a seven hundred percent increase in our snowplows right now.
Exactly.
Okay, personnel.
All right, thank you, all right, well, snowplow discussions gonna continue. So, item agenda twenty-nine, discussion and vote on whether to approve hiring seasonal snowplow drivers and set the rate of pay rate for C D L B and class D drivers employed for winter twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. So the town is looking to hire about four of the C D L Bs and about two of the class D drivers. C D L B licenses are about twenty-five dollars an hour, which is the rate we're looking to do, and then the class D at twenty-two dollars an hour. Again, anticipating some snow this season, and we wanna be prepared for it, and gosh knows, we've tried to hire and, and get some new drivers and. We always increase this rate every year for the, the private side, so.
So this is just hiring a person to drive one of our vehicles?
Correct.
They've done it in the past, but the two folks that used to do it are, one's moved away and the other one's not interested anymore, I guess.
Okay, yep, that makes sense.
All right. Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, whatever it takes to get people out there to clean the roads and make them safe, it's, this is what, obviously, this is all directed through trucks, so I'm, I have no doubt.
Chuck wants to do it, I'm, I've got my support.
He gave me the rates of the twenty-two and twenty-five as well.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right, I entertain a motion to approve the hiring of seasonal plow, snowplow drivers and set the rate of pay rate for C D L B at twenty-five dollars an hour. And class D drivers at twenty-two dollars an hour for the employment of the winter twenty-five, twenty-six season.
Make that motion?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's sign and then adjourn.
So I'm gonna talk while you sign. Wanna shout out to Representative Kara Fiola, we got a twenty thousand dollar earmark for the COA, I mean, for the, for the, yeah, for the COA to continue the food program in there, so.
Awesome.
That is awesome, you know, given the state of affairs, we weren't sure, being non-M B T A compliant, whether we would still get that earmark, but we did. Also, I just wanna say, um, we are looking to set up a food drive to help with people that are, have food insecurities. And possibly have the drop-off at the town hall and COA. Food would then be delivered to the food pantry, the food pantry is also taking donations and they're taking donations of food and any kind of gift cards to grocery stores and whatnot. So, uh, anybody so inclined to donate can drop those off at the town hall and we'll get them to the food pantry or bring them to the food pantry when they're there on Mondays and Tuesdays.
Do we wanna put any kind of like parameters of what, like, what we're looking for, obviously non-perishable, I'm assuming?
Yeah, non-perishable.
You know, what am I saying, sorry, I've got everyone wrong, I think, so far. Yeah, that, well, that's awesome, that's exciting, and I, you know.
Yeah, I'm gonna work on that this week, I just haven't had time to solidify that, but I really think, you know, given the times.
Oh.
We're gonna have more people in need, the food pantry has already seen an uptick of traffic.
Yeah, with Snap.
Yeah, Snap being in question, I think they just voted to get half back today.
Yeah, I saw that.
It's holidays, too, so there's more need in general, and you can't always get everything you need, so like, you know, gift cards would be great to grocery stores, maybe to Stop &amp; Shop, who's such a great sponsor for us. Stop &amp; Shop helps the town immensely, helps the food pantry immensely, so anything that we can do.
Awesome.
That's all I have. I'm sure there's more, but I can't remember.
That's all, you'll think of it afterwards, that's the way it goes.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.